We want to breathe education and follow that education. I'm going to ask our new EMS director to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, do we worship God, we love you, and we thank you for this day and just this opportunity to be in here today and do the work of Bishop County. And I thank you for the men and women gathered around these tables. I ask you just to lead and guide and direct us in the decisions we make today. I thank you for each and every citizen represented here as well and our staff. We'll be asking special blessing upon each and everyone in this room tonight. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we call on any order, I see we've got a special guest tonight, Mr. George Trexler, Chief Deputy from McIntosh County Sheriff's Department. Mr. Trexler, have you got something?
I do. Since your last meeting, September, who presented his money to you, Chef Jessup wanted me to deliver the money summing $225,614.
And that's for Albert?
Yes.
Good work. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I'll give that to the manager and be a good hand.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we'll call our meeting to order. First item on our agenda is roll calls to all commissioners called present. So the next item is an action item to approve the agenda. Everybody should have printed the agenda before. Some might offer a motion on the agenda tonight.
I'm making a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotz. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries your hands. Next item, we have to approve minutes. There's two sets of minutes. There's a January 10th work session. There's a January 11th regular meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had some time to review those minutes. Somebody offer a motion on the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner McClellan to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carlwacki. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries your hands. All right, next item on our agenda will be visitor presentation. We have Ms. Mary Ann Hager from McIntosh County Animal Control and Shelter Director. State of the McIntosh. She's here to tell us about the state of the McIntosh Animal Shelter.
Thank you. Short message is, the state of the shelter is excellent. This is my ACO, Ms. Kathy Popple. She's also our office manager, an amazing organizer. And this is Ms. Casey Thomas, our, well, adoption coordinator, I guess. She's a wizard at working with social media and finding really, really important for our dogs. And she also has two amazing kill techs. And so we've been doing really good. We had 554 incomers and 550 outgoing animals booked last year. And out of all that, only 10 euthanizations. None of them were for space. All the euthanizations were either the dogs were just so broken that they were dangerous, or they were sick, or they were so previously injured that they could not be rehabilitated. So that's pretty amazing. We turned in a total of $9,204.50 to the county. That was adoption fees, reclaim fees, those kinds of things. So that's all good. You know, we're in the right direction. And we have the Friends of McIntosh County Animal Services, which, Attorney Popple helped us get organized. And what that does is it spends money on the extras, the things that the county really should not have to be responsible for, like heartworm beds, toys, enrichment, you know, for the animals, those kinds of things. We recently had a cat come in with a lame leg that had to be amputated, and that was a $400 vet bill that the Friends paid for. So that's really good. It's really helping, help our animals be healthier and therefore more adoptable. And so that's great. We had 28 cases successfully prosecuted in the district court. That's for a variety of offenses from cruelty all the way down to just eventually not having your dog on the leash, not having him be at large. And we always, always give people warnings, try to talk to people, try to explain, you can't do this, you have to do that. And this is why, before we get to the point of writing citations, when I get to the point of writing citations, if you have decided you're going to be not flying, come out of what? And once we get them in court, that generally changes the minds. And that's a good thing. We responded to a total of 305 complaints. There again, a variety of things that we had to go out and take care of. And there have been no Department of Agriculture violations. They did suggest that we redo the concrete kennels where we have a lot of peeling paint. And that is underway. It's going slow, but it's because of the weather conditions as much as anything. But it's happening, and the department guy got in constant contact with them, and they're very well beat with progress that we have made. All of this is accomplished with three full-time and two part-time dedicated employees, and we're all individuals. And we get excellent help. Ty Popple got us agreement, and so we got the new equipment. We got two new dog traps. We got several cat traps. We got bite gloves. We got new catch phones. We got a lot of this safety equipment that we really needed. What we had was really getting a lot of attention. So we're really grateful to have the new things at no cost. You know, so that was great. Dr. Laura Bailey and her staff are magnificent. We couldn't do half of what we do without them. And, you know, support from y'all is wonderful. We get extraordinary support from law enforcement, all of which is really, really, really good. I put you have here. Over here, a conclusion handout. It's a breakdown of the animals that came in and how they went out and why they came in. We've got, you may not understand what this safekeeping is. We get a lot of those. Most of those are generated from traffic stops that people are arrested that have animals in their cars. They can range anywhere from rabbits to birds to whatever, a snake last year recently, but anyway, it happens. So that's a breakdown of where those are. Most of those traffic stops occur after hours. And so somebody has to be able to call 1-47, and we have to go out and brave interstate at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. It happens a lot, but anyway, thanks. It's going to pay us pretty well to get our animals back, which obviously is important to me. The next page is a total of the money that came in for each month last year. And then we get to my favorite part. We get updates often on the animals that are adopted from us. So this is just a brief kind of overview of some of the different ways that animals come into our shelter. This first page, is a skipper page. Oh, mine's backwards. Okay, I'm sorry. All right, so who's got?
We have Lily and Bilo.
Okay, what? Okay.
And Dixie, huh?
All right, Dixie ran the first one.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Dixie is a little redhound that turned itself into the shelter. We looked out the window one day, and this little hound is staggering up the driveway. And so now she's happily living in Virginia and had a Christmas picture taken with her print. She doesn't look particularly pleased. But, and this rain, the Santa Claus picture, Kathy and the recent dog is named Rain, it couldn't, Kathy and I nearly drowned when getting that dog. It was a monsoon that day. But anyway, we got him, and he was with us for 11 months. And he's now happily living in Savannah, and he has his own power plant among other things. So he did pretty well. And then look, we got the seizure neck, no, lily neck. Okay, Lily, who doesn't look particularly happy either, but is, that's just the way she looks. She was left in a metal building in a motel parking lot when the temperature was in the mid-nights. We really think this woman was trying to murder this dog because she had called us and warned us to come and get this dog and another one and euthanize it. And she was from out of state even, or we used to do that. That made her furious. So she locked the dogs up in that awful building, and somebody called us, so we had to go get them. Well, she wanted Lily euthanized to go live with her. Well, Lily's just fine. And then we got Bilo. He was named Bilo because he was constantly in the Bilo grocery store helping himself breath. And we had, we had to do a fair amount of work with him, but he's now, you know, riding on jet ski, so he's doing really well himself. And the last one is, is so, we finally, after a couple years of prime, were able to shut down a notorious bug now. And this 26 dogs and the three puppies, the 26 dogs never actually had to physically enter our shelter, but rescues came and picked them up because we had been contact ready. They knew we were fixing to do this. They were waiting on us. Look, when we got back to the shelter room. And three of the puppies had Harbo, so they could not take those, but we managed to pull through Harbo, and once they were well, they came and got those as well. So that's just a small sample of the way they come in. But anyway, that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, rest of the comments. You know, fortunately, we were able to hear some of this last night in our work session. And just like you said last night, Mary Ann, she went back out there and took over. That thing was pretty hot topic for years and years and years, and my phone blew up and any other, anybody else's commissioner did too. And obviously, your staff as well, and you've got a great staff, and we appreciate you because those complaints have gone away. I've got complaints, probably over 28 people prosecuted.
Probably.
But it's all been good. Everything that I, the feedback I have about this all been good. And you and I talk often, but we appreciate you and your staff, all you ladies and what y'all do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, you know, commissioners have anything? I appreciate you all as well. My dog came home well as well.
Good for you. Thank you.
Can you share some information about what they can do for adoption or any more?
Yeah, if you'd like to, yeah. That's Casey's ballpark, really. What we're doing is, whoa, that's what I did want to say, too, is please, everybody, kind of follow our Facebook page, because what's going on in the shelter is on there. And all the animals that we have that are available for adoption are listed on there. But the adoption process is, you look at the Facebook pet agent or various other sites. She posts them all everywhere.
We have three different sites, and then we have probably 10 different social media pages that help us the dogs do. So they go in there, they fill out their application, and then we screen their vet references. We do a version, we have their home check. If they don't pass certain things, they just don't get the pet. But then we also require a two-week post-adoption vet checkup, and they do comply with it. The dogs get really good homes, the cats do, too. We have a lot of outstanding doctors. We even have one in Mississippi. We have one in Texas. We have them everywhere. And the animals don't come back as often. We might have many, too, in one year that come back. So it really benefits us in the long run.
Thank you for reading. All right, thank you all again. And that's all the visitor presentations. We have no public hearings. We do have one bit of old business. The first item under old business, consider appointments to the McIntosh Dairy and McIntosh Joint Store Preservation Commission. This is an action item. Commissioner Manager, do you want to speak on that, please?
Yes, sir. We currently have candidates for a conference to the Joint City Council HPC. We also need to send a nomination to the chairman for that board. It'll go to the city, and then they'll approve it or put it back in our action. These appointments will serve a three-year term for HPC, and that term will expire on January 31st.
All right, so we're going to make three more appointments and a chair. Recognition of chairs.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we will open the floor.
I would make a motion that we nominate Maurice Bailey, Tony Thaw, and Dicky Braun as the board appointments, and Mrs. Anita Harke as the chair.
You said Maurice Bailey, Tony Thaw.
Dicky Braun as the board appointments, and Anita Harke as the chair. She was previous vice chair.
Okay. We have a motion for Mr. Bailey, Mr. Thaw, Mr. Braun, and Ms. Katie Bailey.
And Ms. Harke.
Harke. Okay, Harke as chair. So is there a second? Second. Motion was by Commissioner Carlwacki. The second is by Commissioner Harrow. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'm not sure of the process, but I like to make. I have a different set of people to not make, and I have an issue with one of them.
One of them?
With one of the ones that Commissioner Conso. Did you call Conso?
Call him.
Call him.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so we've got to deal with that first. So any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Chair represents, motion carries. All right, that's everything on old business. We'll move into new business. Number one under new business, consider two appointments to the McIntosh County Board of Health. This is an action item. Mr. Chairman, I mean, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. We currently have two appointments for Health for the expired term from the project and the city project. Currently have three applications in your packet. However, this project has expressed interest. We did have a communication problem with her center. Consider an application to be refunded. I didn't know that was bad, but we did talk to her on the line. She didn't have to be considered. These will be six-year appointments, and they will expire on December 31st, 2026.
All right. Full, we'll open the floor for nominations for these two appointments. So somebody nominate?
I make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Barbara Hurst and Judith Lloyd Pedd.
I think.
All right, so Commissioner Carlwacki nominate Ms. Hurst and Ms. Lloyd, and accepted by Commissioner Harrow. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries three to one. All right, next item under new business, consider resolution 2022-4, establish fees for services rendered by McIntosh County Emergency Medical Services. This is an action item. There was a lot of discussion on this last night. Commissioner Manager?
Yes, sir. Today, in fact, we have a new resolution. We did remove the $75 fee for response fee and non-transport. We removed that. All the other fees were hanging the same as last night, but these two fees will be unactive once we bring in EMS back in house. It says the basic life support, transport $500. The advanced life support, $1, $600. Advanced life support, $2, $700. Specialty care transport, $18, $800. Mileage, $18, $18 per mile. And the response fee if treated and non-transport, which is probably known as TNT, at $150. All these rates do fall below the state average except for the mileage fee, which matches what Glen County is considering to adopt.
Okay. All right, I know last night, well, we'll just, we'll see if any commissioners have any questions or comments first. I know that we had Mr. Wallace speaking to these as well. I think he was basically answering questions last night. So any questions or comments from this commission?
Once we adopt these fees, where can our citizens access this information?
They can find it in the clerk's office, all about the clerk's office.
That there's nowhere they can access them from?
We could possibly put it on there. I know that you explained about doing EMS page off our website, and that could be on there.
Okay. Now, unfortunately, I had a mistake during the January meeting, but did you introduce Mr. Wallace at the January meeting?
I did not, because I was not here.
All right, you want to take this opportunity, or you want us to invoke this through?
Let's finish and do this, and then we'll do the call back.
All right.
If, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of these fees, they're in line with the, I would give the two names mixed up, Medicare?
They, now Medicare and Medicaid have not paid 100% of these. They only pay a certain percentage of these. I do have those rates here. Medicare and Medicaid will pay $382.52 of the VLS, $454.25 of the ALS I, $657.46 of the ALS II, $770 of the specialty care transport, and $7.70 of the mileage.
Okay. You may have said it already, but how did you know up the things you said?
They're based on surrounding counties and state averages.
Maybe you said that last time.
Yes.
And for the most part, other than that, we're below.
That's right. We're below state averages.
We're below state averages. Okay. All right, so somebody offer a motion on resolution 22, 2022-4?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2022-4.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Carlwacki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotz. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries your hands. All right, we'll move on to number three. Under new business, consider resolution 2022-5, amending the FY 2022 general fund budget for emergency medical services. This is an action item as well. Commissioner, please talk on this.
Yes, sir. This is resolution, this is a fiscal year 2022 budget for EMS. It does add an additional $409,108 in expenses. It also adds an additional $409, $409,108 of revenues. $155,982 of those revenues would be in annuals leased for four months. Both are still June 1st, but will be back in house. And the other $253,126 will be made up in miscellaneous revenues from the transfer from our Harbo fund, which is eligible for EMS.
Okay. All right, this is another topic. We had a lot of discussion last night. Is any question or comments from the commission tonight?
Question. From the Harbo fund, what do we, what are we going not do that we initially planned?
We initially planned to allocate all the funds for year one. We haven't allocated any of them for year two yet. Will we get most of those funds in the next month, too? We either get them in March or May, or which month, too. We have allocated anything for year two yet.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, somebody offer a motion on resolution 2022-5?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2022-5.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Carlwacki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harrow. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries your hands. All right, we move into number four. This is a considered application for issuance of certificate of appropriateness from Mike Malone. This is an action item. Do you want to give them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Certificate of appropriateness is only approved by the historic preservation commission. Y'all know we made some appointments today. We're trying to stand that board up. We don't currently have a board, so it's coming to y'all's take. This application has been in the hopper for a little while, so we do feel like we seem to have action taken upon it. Staff has reviewed it, and it does seem to meet all qualifications of the McIntosh County Historic District guidelines for building. We did check the minimum square footage if there's not exceeded. We did check the roof guidelines and porch guidelines, and everything looks kosher bus. One note that I would like to clarify, on Mr. Malone's application, we did put the wrong map and parcel number. That is a parcel that he owns, but it's not the one tied to this, to this house. And that parcel number is 0102A0062.
So 62 instead of 7?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And staff does recommend approving this deal.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the commission at this time? Okay, somebody offer a motion on, consider this application for issuance of certificate appropriateness?
I make a motion to approve the application.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carlwacki to approve. Is there a second?
I think.
Second by Commissioner Harrow. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries your hands.
I have a question, not directly related to that. The, I know I have one gentleman that called in reference to another similar situation. Or you all want to do similarly to expedite it or wait until?
We have two more applications in the hopper right now. The city can get their board to finish appointments next week. I'd like for the historic preservation commission to take care of it. If not, we will.
Okay. All right, the last item under new business, consider scheduling a planning retreat. In fact, the manager is going to check on some edits.
Yes, sir. I have two days to retreat last night. Door check is only available on March 23rd.
Should I ask a Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
And that would be from?
I have the room from April 4th.
April 4th. All right, that's a definite one, ladies and throughout. So someone offer a motion to schedule a planning retreat for March 23rd?
I make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Carlwacki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotz. Any further discussion?
Can we change the time to 8:30?
Yes, sir. Sure. Okay. So we're going to say 8:30. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries your hands. That's the last item under new business. We'll move right into commission reports. We'll stop the commissioner club.
No.
What, Commissioner Harrow? No report. Chris Lotz.
No report. Thank you.
No report. All right, well, I'm going to do a chairman's report. You better say something. Yeah, we'll use the chairman's report to introduce Mr. Frankie Wallace, our new EMS director. Mr. Wallace is just recently retired from Glen County, and we brought him on board. He's local McIntosh County resident, has been his whole life, been in EMS fire and law enforcement his whole life. And he retired from Glen County. He's coming back home, and he's going to be the point guy, the lead guy, standing in our EMS service backup, worth the money you have to have him. So, Mr. Wallace, anything?
Not at this time. Give me a couple of months, Mr. Chairman, and I shouldn't be able to keep you some reports.
All right, here's the deal. All right, we're glad to have him on board, and that will conclude the chairman's report. We'll move into the county manager's report.
Yes, sir. I would like to add Frankie retired from Glen County on January 31st and came to work for McIntosh County with on February 1st.
Yeah.
No break. All right, back to my report. We did release an RSP for roadside vegetation control. That will be a spray, that will be sprayed on some of our main dirt fair, county dirt fair throughout the county. It will make the grass grow faster, and we won't have to cut it as much. Those bids are due on February 24th, and we should have a contract for y'all by that at the next month meeting. Those funds will work through this part of this year 2022 growth part of budget. Also, since March, there will be an advertisement for the Saffel Oak Community Center Rehabilitation Project. There is a mandatory pre-bid meeting onsite March 2nd at 9:30 a.m., and the bids will be due March 16th at 2:00 p.m. Just to, as a reminder on that project, we're using that, using some of our funding to redo that, that center, the two exam rooms in there as part of that project. The sports complex, the contractor did start a week after Christmas. The clearing of the site, the permanent debris, the silting is complete. He was scheduled to start moving dirt this week. I don't know if he's done that yet, but they were starting dirt moving this week. As of right now, everything is on schedule. The contractor did express some concerns about material delays once construction of the buildings and stuff start, but as right now, it's still on schedule. Our solid waste management plan, July 4th, has sent us a draft of that document, and we are currently reviewing it. Once we have done reviewing it, it will come to a public hearing and to y'all to approve. We expect that to happen in the next 30 to 60 days. Our visitor center, construction of the visitor center is ongoing. We talked to the contractor last week. He doesn't leave his part of the construction contract. Should be done by March 15th. The original contract offer to be done at the end of February. However, he has experienced some delays and some supplies there. So we're just looking at a couple of extra weeks on that contract. Our classification and compensation study, I know y'all a week or two ago about problems to catch on that contract with us there, current statistics currently. We did receive a copy of, a copy of Wayne County, the city of St. Mary's, and the city of Brunswick. We're considering trying to do that salary study in-house. If not, same hit, my finance correct has, I have another company that can do that. We're talking to them to try to get a proposal now. And last but not least, 2022 spots, we do have a scheduled meeting with the city of Darien next Wednesday, February 16th at 5:00 p.m. I know we had a little bit of discussion last night about moving it up an hour, but since I noticed it was 5:00 p.m., I would, to change it, I would have to give it another 10-day notice, which will lead it to 5:00 p.m. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Question?
Yes, sir.
It appears to me that some of the cities that you quoted before, comparison study, are not comparable in size to McIntosh County. Do you find one is comparable in size?
Possible. That, this is the ones that they sent us, some of the most recent ones they completed to be asked for ones that were comparable to us, they just didn't have it. That's the worst. So probably we'll go another time.
Well, ACCG have counties similar in size.
Well, why am I saying that? We're not able to do a whole compensation plan for, we can help gather, and we'd be glad to, but we're not in a position...
And I'm aware of that, and it's my understanding that you all have pay of, of different positions from different counties.
We have a great amount of that posted online. That's what I pulled from the form, it's from online when I've done it myself. And they group us in counties like size.
All right, Mr. Manager, so that concludes your report?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. I'm pleased to announce there's no need for an executive session, and I have no further reports now.
Okay, and nothing else, our friend in the gym, then we'll be adjourned.